It is 5:30. Welcome everyone to the City of Monroe Planning Commission Meeting, Tuesday, July 19th, 2022. We'll have a roll call. Note that two members are absent Nate Tradaway and Mike Echols. I will ask now for an approval of the agenda. A motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay. And next is the minutes of the previous meeting which you have. I think everyone's looked those over. And if someone would like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I move the minutes be approved with necessary corrections if there are.
Any corrections noted?
No. Second.
Motion is second. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Report from code officer, we don't have a report, so we're going to move right on down to first item, request for rezone, PCD to PCD modifications Monroe Pavilion. Is there someone here?
I'll do, I'll give you a brief presentation real quick first and then we can move into the applicant.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for a modification to the Monroe Pavilion project. They're asking for the rezone to be from PCD to PCD with modifications. And essentially, there's four changes that they're requesting inside their pattern book that is included in this request. So first, the first modification that's included is they're asking to include a building height maximum in the pattern book. Currently, it defaults to the B3 zoning within our ordinance, which is a 35-foot max, which is a little prohibitive for, you know, potential hotel lots, which are defined on their master plan as being a use on two of the lots that are in the development. Thirty-five feet would be a little bit restrictive, so they're asking to increase that to a height maximum of five stories. And that five stories would be a flexible amount, so it's not a specific dimension that we're at, they're asking for, but something that would obviously give them what we would define as stories within the building. So it could be up to 50 feet or something like that. We don't want to be specific in the dimension to prohibit any flexibility. The second modification is to allow for zero lot line subdivision of the major shopping center parcel, and that's specifically outlined in the same paragraph as the heights increase. They're asking to be able to subdivide their main shopping center building through the essentially a feasible parcel line would be located through the main shopping center building itself. The third modification they're requesting is to increase the parking allowance within the outlots themselves on the development. Currently, it defaults to a one space per 600 square foot maximum per parking space requirement for the outlots, and that's specific to restaurants. So they're asking that that be increased, and they've provided the commission a range of parking numbers that would be based on, I guess, there's essentially three types of parking ranges they provided, and they're also including an option for a variance potential for any future applicant that would exist on this property that wished to pursue an increase beyond what's allowed in the pattern book. Currently, the pattern book is the zoning ordinance of this property, and there was no provision that allowed a variance from the parking requirement within it, so they've added that variance feature. And lastly, the modification that they're asking for is a color change and some other modifications to allow certain tenant users to modify for their corporate appearance. So the staff's done the analysis of this request. We've recommended there be two conditions. The first is that the zero lot line subdivision allowance could be specifically reflective of that shopping center parcel. The language inside the pattern book is for the outlots is specific to being one structure on an outlot and things of that nature, so I think it would be appropriate that it be applicable only to the shopping center parcel. And then the second condition we've added is basically the summary of our analysis is that the parking calculations they provided were recommending that they go with one space per four seats plus the one space per 400 square foot max of 150%, 150% of the minimum required spaces in the development. And that's all that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. That being said, is anyone here in opposition to any of these proposals who'd like to speak?
I think you need the applicant first.
Pardon?
The applicant.
Oh. An applicant, I'm sorry, with your presentation. So is the applicant here? Sorry, jumped ahead of you there a little bit.
Okay, that's great. Evening, how are y'all?
Good.
Appreciate y'all taking time for us this evening. John Argo with MAB, owner and developer of the shopping center. I've got a number of folks here that are available either to speak or if you have questions, I'd be happy to, happy to respond. Can I, can I point those out to you?
Certainly.
Would be okay? We've got Rick Maxian, who's the architect for the project here, Ryan Fritz, who's the civil engineer for the project. We've got two gentlemen from McAllisters, Jay Behringer and David Moon, that are available to answer questions specifically about the restaurant parking, so. Brad, we had a couple of handouts, can we hand those out now?
Yes, absolutely.
Would it be better to hand them out before?
Yeah, we can hand those out.
Is that okay? Can we do that? Ryan, if you'll help me with that. We've got a letter, I'm going to kind of guide my remarks from the letter, so I've got a letter, so you don't have to take notes and we can get it into record. If I misspeak, the letter should be a little more clear perhaps, but hopefully I can get all that done. We also have a letter coming to you from Panda Express, who's one of the restaurant users, and you'll hear briefly from McAllisters as well. We've got that for you. Ryan, is that the two, is that, is there anything else we're handing?
Just the overall site plan.
Yeah, an overall, and then an overall site plan, just so you've got something at your fingertips in front of you to look at, to show us the shopping center. Brad's got, thanks for bulk of it on the schedule. What I'd like to do if I can is take up the, I'm going to hold the parking for last, that has, it's a little more involved discussion perhaps, but on the building height maximum, as Brad indicated, we have two lots that are designed, sized and designed for hotels. Most of the hotels that want to come to Monroe are in the four and five story range. We actually have a contract signed for one particular hotel, and they're, they're going to be around 50 feet. The five stories easily gets them comfortably inside that where they can have a parapet on top that screens their rooftop equipment and so forth, so really that, that particular limit is aimed to accommodate a particular user. We've, we know there's a big, big demand, I think Brad's, Brad's and others at the city have told us about, you know, need for hotel, and this is a name chain hotels, one I stay at, one a lot of y'all have stayed at before too, and we'll be able to announce that shortly, but that's, that particular element of the request is aimed to accommodate the hotels that want to be in Monroe. There's more than one, by the way, but we're, we're happy to have, have the one and bring it before you. There's a color change to the shopping center. Rick, if you want to come up and perhaps talk about that. Brad, are you able to put, is there a slide for that one? Yes, okay. This is in our, this is in our retail shops, on the far left end, we have a particular chain retailer whose corporate colors they would like to incorporate, so Rick, you want to chat briefly about that?
Yeah, hi. Rick Maxian, I was the architect on this. So we have, we are looking at a tenant right here, Verizon, they have specific colors they like. The grays in there, it's a dark gray and a light gray, and then they're changing our standing seam awnings to fabric, same color, black, they're just fabric. The color gray out there is used on Five Below as well as some of our outlots, so it's not a brand new color we're introducing to the center, it's just into this building itself.
Okay. And I think, Brad, any, any questions, we're happy to answer, we go, so feel free, please. Brad, I guess, zero, the zero lot line, do we have any questions on the coloration or any of that? Okay. And then the zero lot line, Brad, that condition, addressing it to the, specific to the shopping center tract is fine. We have, in one of our leases, we have a particular anchor tenant that likes to have its own tax parcel, so we're trying to create a legal platted parcel to accommodate that, and that way the tax bill for that parcel can be tied directly to that tenant and not sort of blended in with the other 30 that are out there. That's just a particular need, so again, that's a, that's another user-based reason we're in front of you is to allow a zero lot line. So basically, the property line would fall on the common wall between the two buildings, I guess, is that a good way to describe it, Brad?
I think so.
Okay. Any questions about that one? That's, okay. Before we get to the parking, I, I think Brad pointed this out, but I want to, our, this, the changes we're asking for here are purely applied to our zoning pattern book, which is the zoning for, for our property, so any change that you might concede tonight is appropriate and is appreciated, of course, but also it only applies to this project. It's not a citywide change, not a precedent in any way, it's just basically to make a user accommodations as we've gotten into the project and learn a little bit more about what, what's needed in order to completely build it out. The other, the other element we've asked, asked about is we've got four, four restaurant users. I've lost a, unfortunately, already lost a coffee and another food over, over parking. The, when we originally did the parking requirements, this was all adopted pre-COVID in 2019, and of course, the restaurant, restaurant world has changed since then, but the parking request to modify the parking maximum in the table is to provide a few more spaces to accommodate the needs of these four users. Panda Express is one, McAllisters is one, we've got a Huey Magoo and a Whataburger. And those four are at contract with us. And talking to Brad, he thought it would be best to, if we kind of carried the ball for all four and came to you with a consolidated request, it's how best to modify the parking table to provide enough parking so these folks, these folks could succeed. Jay, do you or David want to, want to speak at this point? I, I thought y'all, would y'all like to hear from the McAllisters folks a little bit?
I would.
I mean, they're here to answer questions or to help, help y'all's thinking about the parking. If you'd like.
Hello, Jay Behringer with McAllisters. Thank you for your time, for letting us come here and come before you. We're, we're new to this town. Actually, we're new to McAllisters. This will be our first McAllisters, hopefully, you know, we'll build some more in the future. So it's still a mom and pop business to us. We're not a big developer. I don't have 20, you know, to decide this is going to be our store, and this is going to be our investment. We're going to be there every day, and this is, we're putting everything into this, and we're, we're eager to get started in this community. We're actually a member of the Chamber of Commerce already, because I want to go ahead and start building and, you know, start selling sandwiches as fast as I can. I'm ready to go, and we're so eager about doing this. The whole process, we've already got the plans drawn up, but like John said, we are having a problem with the parking because things have changed. We've got a, it's a, you know, I wonder if you're familiar with McAllisters, it's a, you know, basically a sandwich and deli shop, so we're going to have, you know, sandwiches and salads, and we've got potatoes and, you know, different drinks, coffee drinks and our, anyway, sweet teas and other drinks. But we've got to look at parking, not only for, you know, our regular customers, but we've got, we've got curbside service parking, we've got our delivery service, you know, Grubhub, those different delivery services that deliver to different persons in town, but also you've got to have, we're looking at EV parking spots, because electronic car, you know, electric cars are the future, you know, we've got Rivian even looking, you know, I've got different things coming. So we're going to have designated parking spaces for an electric car hookup, so hopefully that'll pull in some more customers into this shopping center. But also, we've got catering service, so, and then we've got employees, and so we're trying to figure out how we can contain all of our customers or all of our, you know, employees and all of our services on that one lot. I'm happy to say that the lot is big enough, it's, I think it's right at an acre, if not a little bit more than an acre, so we do meet the, you know, watershed guidelines and the surface, the, the, the natural surface ratio, so it's not over pavement, so we can increase our parking, but like I said, I don't want to go nuts, and we're not going to build a parking deck or have 80 parking spaces. We just want to increase it more than, I think it's 40 that we're allowed, and I know that with 40 parking spaces, that we won't be able to manage our business to the capacity that we have to to stay open, you know? Looking at our P and L statements, we've got to be able to serve so many customers throughout the day, and if we only have that limited parking spaces, then it's going to limit to how many customers that we can actually serve. It's going to, basically, it comes to, our parking lot's going to be like, I call it the Chick-fil-A effect, where I don't know if you've noticed Chick-fil-A, like, I'm going to go by there because I can't get into inside that restaurant, you know? And, you know, and I don't want that to happen, I don't want people to go by because they can't pull into our, you know, our out parcel, as well as even in the covenants to that development, we can't have people parking outside of our shopping center and it actually, and then come to us. I would love if we could have employees and walk to it, but, you know, we've got to be self-contained, and to do that, we just need a little bit more parking. Like I said, I'm looking at the request, and hopefully that's just enough, you know, to, I think that can suit us and suit any potential other businesses that are coming to this town, and it's going to be just to this shopping center and not the city, just like he said, so.
Can I jump in? Yeah, I'm Jay's business partner, I'm David Moon. Also, wanted to just give y'all a little bit of background, one, we wanted to introduce ourselves because we are excited about coming to Monroe and serving the customers and the guests in Monroe. Both of us have a background from Zaxby's. I was vice president of operations, franchise operations and training, worked for Zaxby's corporate for 19 years. Jay was actually a restaurant owner, so he opened two Zaxby's. So we have a lot of experience in the restaurant industry, and those stores that we were able to service, and, and in my particular case, being in the operations department, those stores, those Zaxby's restaurants that have 40-something parking spaces, they really struggle. And especially with the way that the world has evolved now, where catering, curbside, call-in orders, all that's becoming such a big piece of the industry, you've got more and more, you know, cars coming in there, and so just our concern is being able to service this community the way we want to serve. But yeah, just want to give you a little bit of information on our background and who we are. Like I said, we are super excited about this venture, we're super excited about this community, and we want to, you know, what he and I are going to do moving forward is we are going to be out meeting with the people in the community, letting people know who we are and what we're all about and how we can best serve this community. But yeah, we just feel like with more, the more parking spaces, especially having to have the, the increased number of employees with these different sales channels that you now have, post-COVID, it would just make, make for a more efficient operations, a better way to serve Monroe.
So what is the number of spaces you're requesting?
So based on, do you want to?
Good evening, Ryan Fritz with Columbia Engineering. Thank you guys for your time, and thank you to Brad for, we've been working on this with Brad for, for a while now. I think you guys, in your packets that we distributed in the back of the, the letter, is that same table that you see on, on this presentation. What we did is we looked at kind of a low, a middle, and a high parking calculation, you know, that we think is in, you know, is close to what Monroe's looking for, right? Monroe may not be the jurisdiction next door, might not be down the road, so we're, we're trying to abide by what Monroe is, has in their current parking ordinance and updating that. So the three, the three columns in red, we proposed a one per 300 and one per 350 square footage, maintaining the 135% maximum, which is current to the pattern book. The, the middle one, which would be your highest, is one per three, one per three seats, one per 300 square feet at 150%, and then the staff recommended column is the low end, which is the far right, and that's one per 400 at one, one per four seats and 150%. Ideally, from talking to the tenants that, you know, MAB has under contract, ideally we would, we would lean toward the, the middle to the high, and, you know, we, I respect, you know, Brad's opinion and how Brad, you know, the calculation that he sees, but if you're asking me which one would we prefer, I think we would say we prefer the middle or the, the high of those two calculate, of those three calculations.
Ryan, do you, do you happen to know, based on the current way that it's set up, the McAllisters that we would open, would have roughly around 42 parking spaces?
Yeah.
With the, with the, this proposal, what would that take in parking spaces?
So, McAllisters, if you look specifically in this table or on the screen, the first blue one on this screen, it would be McAllisters. You know, current Monroe parking standard is based off seating and square footage, and then your allowable maximum. So in our current pattern book, McAllisters is allowed 39 parking spaces. As David and Jay discussed a little bit earlier, I mean, I think, what, if, if there's a number that you guys, you know, needed, that's probably around 60.
We are hoping for 60, 55, 60. When you consider 39 parking spaces and how much of the employees are going to take out of spaces, plus all the, you know, delivery pickups that are coming in there, we just, we just feel like 39 is not enough to serve, and we think that's going to be a very hot, I think that there'll be a lot of people on the road that are going to be excited about having McAllisters.
Mr. Chairman, may I interject?
Sure.
So have you looked at the requirement that, that Ryan's describing specifically that, so we're recommending that there be 56 potential parking spaces on your site? So the one per four to 400 with 150% max would get you 56 spaces.
And, you know, the, yes, thanks for pointing that out. You know, it's, there's no, there's no perfect calculation. One user is going to differ from a, differ from another user, you know, and what we're trying to really do is not make 15 potential restaurants out here all come in asking for variances if they're not happy. So, you know, like, like Jay, Jay and David described, each of these outlots was designed for a certain amount of, of impervious surface allowable, you know, for stormwater detention requirements. They can't, they can't come out here and build 70 parking spaces just because it wouldn't be, the, the design wouldn't work. So to speak to that point, Brad, it's just, we're trying to lump in as many of the tenants that we've, that we've spoken with, and the numbers that we have align a little bit more with, with the, the middle calculation than the, the one per 400.
Yeah, I, I mean, and Ryan's correct, we, I mean, we've, he and I have worked together on this for the past two months, trying to, trying to find the middle compromise on what would be best for the city, you know, and would allow for adequate parking within the development itself. And in my analysis, I mean, I felt like that the one per four seats and the one per 400 square foot parking space calculation closely aligned with their tenant requirement. I mean, there are a few spaces short here or there, but like, we just heard that the, you know, one of the applicant's future tenants is okay with the potential for there being 56 spaces, which would allow for the one per four and 400 square foot calculation. But that work for all of their potential clients? You know, that's, that's what he just said. It's probably not going to work for each one, but when you look down the line, and I know, you can't read this screen and see that because this literally needs a telescope for that, and I have a magnifying glass to read the one I've got in front of me, my vision is not as good as it used to be, but, and some of the other ones they've identified that they do have contracts with, for instance, there's one that identifies that they need 46 parking spaces, and with the one for four to 400, they get 43. So if three spaces will, are that big of a deal, then they obviously can approach this commission and the city council for variance to get three additional spaces. That's, thank you.
Just, just in commenting further, we've, we've got McAllisters here tonight, but I've also interacted with Panda and Huey and Whataburger, and we've shown them the same, the same three tables, and they seem to be okay with the, the middle, what I'm going to call the middle table, which is the, that's the first one with the two, first one with the, with the two star asterisk seems to be, that's one at three seats, one at 350 square feet, and staying at the same 135% cap. That seems to be, that seems to be satisfactory to all four and avoids a flood of variances coming in, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to do this one time and take care of as much interest as we have and not run off, let's say I've lost a coffee and I've lost another food over this already. We did do some code research, looking at Loganville and Brazelton and Snellville and Walton County and Madison, and the real predicament is the, the Monroe maximum is actually less, the Monroe maximum in the pattern book is less than their, their required minimums, so that's kind of the starting point. We're so far behind what, what ordinary, the rest of the area is requiring, so it's a little bit of catch-up, and I, and I hear what Brad's saying, but I, and, but I know these guys, four or five spaces don't seem like a lot, but it's literally life and death to these businesses, so if y'all can, y'all have been code flexible before to help us establish this pattern book, you know, about three years ago, and if you can be a little code flexible this time where I can cure the parking table to be satisfactory to all the, all the restaurant users, then I know they can, they're ready to move forward to go on and submit plans and, and get, and just like these guys are all chomping at the bit to be here, so if you can be three or four spaces, means a lot to them, and, and at the same time, we're, we're maintaining a code maximum that's, that's just barely above the required minimums in these other five jurisdictions. So I think, I think our request, even for the medium table, is very, very reasonable, and we know based on our conversations with the users that it's acceptable to them, so I don't want to shortcut them four or five spaces and then lose them over, well, you tried, we're out of here. You know, we want to, so that's really, that's really the case, I could just kind of throw myself on your mercy, we, we think we've got a justification for it, we wouldn't be here to ask for less than what we need, so, but we're also trying to say, we're only asking for what we need, we're not trying to create a, you know, an excess beyond that, and it, it does seem to relate to the way the other jurisdictions regulate, regulate restaurant parking, so. I guess with that, any, any other questions for, for us?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Of the number of employees you expect to have, how many do you expect to have on duty at peak time?
About, sorry, about McAllisters, we're looking about 25 employees at peak time, so and that's right now. At business, in orders, and as we pick up service, hopefully we won't have up to 30 at one time, and then you have a shift change, which I'm scared of, and of course, you know, when my shift comes in and they shift leave, and how they integrate their party, you know, this is one person, one person lives, so they can leave at one place, so I should come in, you know, but, but people coming along at that, that, so, but it, that's all.
If I could ask a question about that, I mean, all those employees wouldn't be there all at one time, I mean, there's no way. At 3 o'clock in the afternoon, you're not going to have a full staff.
That's what happens, that's what happens to a lot of employees at one time.
At one time?
Yeah.
Well, then this brings up a, a good point, and this is something that I identified specifically in my staff report, is that there is no shared parking plan for this overall development, so the fact that you would have to park all of your employees and your customers on one lot is semi-problematic for the overall development. If you're going to have 20 employees and the next user and the next user and the next user would have that many employees, then there really wouldn't be many spaces for parking customers, and I think I identified this in my first draft of the report, and I'd also mention in it again, was that if there was some sort of shared parking plan, that may help offset that, but I've managed a McAllisters deli myself in the past, and at no time did I ever have that many employees in the building. You know what I'm saying, except when we first had our grand opening.
Except when we first had our grand opening. So once you go beyond grand opening and you're in your routine operations, are you going to really have 20 employees on one shift?
Yeah, that probably won't happen.
I would imagine that it would once you've passed your grand opening and you've got, you've probably gone through some employee attrition and things of those, because that's what happens in the food business, right? I mean, but I'm not saying you need less parking because of that, but I did, I did just hear the, you two gentlemen say that 56 parking spaces may be okay.
I think that is okay.
I mean, you guys have a takeout window in your business, correct?
Sure. That's why I think 56, that, that is the requirement. Yes, we do have to pick up.
And we're encouraged, we do encourage EV parking in the city. We've had several parking spaces in the city that have come down and switched from, you know, traditional parking to EV parking, but there was no increase in parking on the site to accommodate that. There was a simple transition from EV, you know, regular parking to EV. So inside the city, we've seen that. In fact, we're encouraging it and the city's going to be pushing some of this parking ourselves, but we're not adding parking spaces to make that happen.
How many EV parking spaces are we looking at here?
On our side, I just have two designated spaces and I've switched the plans because of, you know, the parking situation. And so right now, all the plans assess the future EV parking spots and I've let just for the engineer and for the builder to step in for that actual parking because it's still on the table, we're not finished yet. So right now, I'm just going to dedicate just where EV only and the parking spot because we just, I'm going to say we're still trying to figure out the parking situation. So right now, we only have, we'll have parking for the, of course, just disable parking spaces and you've got parking spaces, the curbside service, because some people still won't come inside, they want to, you know, park and pick it up. We have a spot to do that. And, or you don't have to use the electric driveway, you know, but then we also have to have delivery service visiting parking.
All right, thank you.
Brad, it seems like we're close to a compromise on this. What we're recommending is the number 56?
Yeah, so the 56, I mean, like, that's the furthest column over. So if I were to just point to it on the screen here, I mean, it's this column here, which reflects the one, which is what's written in my condition. That's the one per four seats, one per 400 square foot calculation with 150% max. So right now, your current ordinance that regulates parking within our city is what they have inside their pattern book, which is one space per five seats and one space at 600 square feet. So this is basically a compromise from our zoning ordinance to allow for more parking within this development. So I just felt like in my analysis that the one per three and the one per 350 is almost doubling what our own ordinance allows, because it goes to 135% max. Ours is currently 120% in our code. I felt like that the one per four was a, was a middle ground number and it closely relates to what the tenants are actually specifying that they can actually, or that they require. Now, because the tenant says they require, it doesn't mean that every jurisdiction in America is going to fall in line with what those tenants require. There's always going to be some, I guess, some wiggle room there where they're going to have to make accommodations to accommodate local ordinances. In this case, I feel like that this accommodates the potential users on this site and doesn't overpark the development, which is what our current regulations are attempting to avoid.
Is that agreeable?
That particular column, no, that's not our recommendation. We're, we, it falls short for at least three of the other users and maybe a lot of the other users. I mean, we can't forecast every particular use, but it falls short and underparks the other three users. So I think they will, they will go away. What we've recommended is the, is that first red or pink column, which is the middle, which is the middle parking. It does, it does meet McAllisters and it will get, it will get the other users an adequate amount of parking based on our conversations with them. Again, we didn't propose the column furthest to the right. We were asked to include it for discussion here, so we did that. But our proposal was to bring forth something that we know will satisfy the other users. And either of those, either of those first two columns will, but we're willing to do the lesser of the two. And it, it does, it does use the same regulatory scheme, one regulating on the basis of seats plus square footage plus the 135% that's already in the pattern book.
I think I would just take a vote at this point. I mean, if there's no opposition to what's going on and with the, anyone here, I mean, there's not really a negotiation to occur. I mean, you've got my staff recommendation, if you guys are comfortable with it, you can vote on it. I'm not willing to budge that we go to the one to 350. I've spent an inordinate amount of time reviewing their request for all of their different parking and in order to keep the city's policies and not overparking aside, I feel like that the number that I've recommended is the best policy.
In that case, I'll call for a motion to approve the staff's recommendation.
I move we approve this request with the staff recommendation.
Second.
Second to approve.
In favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right.
I think you need to call for any opposition.
Yeah, any opposition at this point now to this proposal? Hearing none, we move to our next item. And thank you for your presentation, how you did a nice job with that and we welcome you here, we really do. Glad to have you here. Next is the COA signage to 2020 Spring Street. Is there someone here, just pick them half of that?
Well, I'll give a staff presentation and then I think they'll, they have a little video for you.
Okay.
All right. So this is for Bank of America. This is on 2020 West Spring Street. They're asking for a certificate of appropriateness from the corridor commission. They're adding quite a few signs to the site or actually replacing quite a view of their existing signs on the site. But the focus of our ordinance only applies to five of their total signs and I'll go through each one of those. They have their existing freestanding sign that's on West Spring Street, or excuse me, 138. And let's see, there's a total of four wall signs and you can see they have their existing photos and proposed changes. And they have their existing photos and proposed changes for each one of those. It's a one-for-one change on all of the wall, wall signs and they're going to remove the internal illumination of the existing signs with their new signs and they'll be haloed it. And the same would apply to their proposed ground sign here. They're also going to remove this, the freestanding pylon for it and lower it to the ground. And so we essentially were agreeable to all of their changes. For their sign changes, the only thing we asked, and I've already asked, talked to the applicant about this, to make sure that we're clear on their understanding about the ground sign needs to have a monument pedestal around the bottom base of it. Essentially, it can't have a little, a freestanding portion of it. And I think they're okay with that, but I'll let them speak to that issue specifically. And then the proposed wall signs, we're just asking that they be constructed as they proposed. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is someone representing Bank of America want to speak to that?
Good evening, Chairman and Commission Member City Staff. Thank you for allowing us to present today. We have a short video to share with you.[1340.12]